Question about the neighborhood officers. It's like the phone call, it's great to send Bert or Scott an email, we'll get a great return, but it's kind of counterproductive. We've been told that it doesn't get filed into the crime stats, so then when you come with the courses...
Yeah, you know, I'll just say this, I don't think we need, in terms of crime stats, I have more than enough for that at Sherburne. And I can tell you that Bert and the other officer, Scott and those officers that work in there truly know how to make sure that certain things are captured. So I rest assured, I have more than enough information on that, okay? So I just want to make sure that we keep it to the neighborhood officer stuff. Just, I'll answer all the other questions, Deputy's got many other meetings tonight.
Hi, I'm Ilona Bada. I'm kind of rapper to Dundas. We have been working closely with the neighborhood police. There has been some change for the better. But now that all buildings are being torn down, a lot of the elements are gravitating to our building. I mean, a lot of youth and people screaming in the hallways. I happen to live on a floor where there's a drug dealer and I don't sleep at night. It's really hard. I'm trying to work so hard to clean up the building, but you know, we need more, we need help. Thanks. I will applaud you guys, you guys are great, you know.
And we will continue to evaluate and balance those resources out. And when the neighborhood officers need some assistance, the crew officers are right there as well. And the crew officers are the ones though that are responding to the taste of this and you know, the Caribbean festival and all these other events. So from time to time, they're not available, so we have augmented that obviously with the primary response. So it's that constant balance that we're trying to strike. And you know, I'll be honest, you don't always get it right. And we're trying really hard to work with the community to understand. I appreciate your kind words about the neighborhood officers. I was just about to do his evaluation, one of us is standing right there. So no, I do appreciate the kind words and we look forward to continue to work with the community and try to sustain some of the wins that we've had.
Hi, I'm Alvin. I'm coming from Tavista. And I have a question, I have a comment. This is the beginning, I'm hoping, the beginning of solving 21st issues in terms of humanity and communication and connectivity. So, and I've heard some of the PD chief saying he's gonna do language training and reporting and all of that, which is amazing. And communication, I feel is the best way to have sometimes lower the crime and events. Like it's a testimony of the police and the communities coming together. And, well, this is the question also, since this is mostly immigrant dominated neighborhoods, Somali community and the marginalized communities and other communities which speaks other languages, which also has the higher crime in the beginning. So what other programs that you are thinking of, is there other programs that you are thinking of or doing or implementing in terms of serving? And I would be kind with the community.
Well, first of all, I said it earlier, we want a bigger, more officer that reflects the diversity. That speaks the language, that understands the culture. What other programs, I really believe is a two-way street. We should not be implementing program on your behalf. That's why the neighborhood officer will come and meet with you every two months and say, "You will tell them what programs I need." It's a collective effort by the community and the police officer working towards a program. I don't want this to be a very prescriptive program where we take that, "This program is good for you, that program is good for you." I want the programs to come from engagement with the community and say, "Okay, if you're a certain community, I need a breakfast club, I need a reading club, I need a life skill club." I don't know that. So it's the community that tells us what you want and the officer working with the community, understanding what the community needs. So for me to stand here and say, "What kind of programs?", I think it would be very premature until the officer worked with you and worked with the different communities and identified what the programs are required.
Fair enough, fair enough. It's like a starting point where the community...
It's fine, it's on September 1st. Thank you.
Good evening, Peter.
How are you going?
Hello. I want to recognize also the attendance of Laura Hassan from the Consul, Chris Montan's office. She's here to give you know everything going on. So I'm going back to your presentation, PowerPoint, and regarding the recommendation by Humber College, academic recommendations for continued development. I'm gonna go to bullet point that talks about youth engagement. In the past, I have been appearing for Toronto Police Services Board, as you are aware of that, for the last 10 years. I have been requesting the service that when the, for community officers engage with youth in, let's say, physical activities like playing basketball, soccer, or baseball, et cetera, would they be able to dress up in a different fashion, avoid to have their office duty, duty weapon or their armor, you know, like this office right here? And playing with children, I think is very reckless. So, and, so I know you're eager to answer my questions. I have another question for you.
You'll answer that one first and then I'll answer your second one?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, Miguel, folks, we looked at the uniform. Because Humber College just say, "This is too intimidating." I agree. But I just want to give you the cost. We commissioned Ryerson University to look at a new neighborhood officer program on the uniform for us. Each officer will be $8,000. I want to put the money in the investment in the police officer first, before we get to the uniform. This is what I'm thinking, but if the committee comes back and says, "I want you to spend the $8,000", we don't care about expanding to different neighborhoods. And I'm open. So Miguel, the answer is yes, we looked into it. But the price is so high, it's $8,000 to outfit. Because everything has to be according to regulations, specs, and this. Ryerson came up with the cheapest cost, almost $8,000 outfit, Officer Fernandez, into a more neighborhood-friendly uniform to engage young people. So I think the investment, you know, we, I have asked the question, "Do we need police officer or the uniform?" So at this time, I'd like to get more officers into neighborhoods before we move from uniform. It may not be the answer you want here, but I have given you an answer.
Thank you, Peter, for that answer, which will be topical discussion on future board meetings.
Up to you.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, so another of your slide presentations talked about the ongoing evaluation timelines. So it appears in November, we will have a survey conducted by Humber College, I believe? Humber College, yeah. So again, you say about the cost of the uniform itself, $8,000. What about the colors for the stylish, like less military stylish? If you're gonna come to our community that, like you mentioned, have a great level of mental illnesses, patients, et cetera, et cetera, traumas, maybe a less, you know, intimidating, like yourself, like you're wearing a white t-shirt, why, like, you wear the bulletproof thing on and then you look less intimidated to the resident community? Perhaps in November something, but we can have a full survey about the color of the uniform. And I know, I understand the costs associated, but again, that's something that we can have discussion as community, as you requested, for you to trust us. We need to understand that you are listening to us. Thank you so much.
Once again, I just want to respond, I think I responded to Miguel already. But this is a uniform that's been prescribed. If the community believe that the Toronto Police Service should change your uniform, then you're more than welcome to make a declaration, to make any request to the Toronto Police Services Board. This is a uniform that's given to us to work and we are, we're there. You know, we try to look at different settings, sometimes we don't go in uniform. But when we're on duty, we have to be in uniform, Miguel. So, and like I always said to you, the cost of changing a uniform is $8,000. I think I provided the answer. So if you want the Toronto Police Service to change your uniform, you're more than welcome to make a declaration, make a request, you're more than welcome to have your uniform changed. So I'm gonna turn it back to the next person.
A lot of the seniors were feeling very isolated and alienated because their community was broken up. And the officers have instilled a sense of confidence and safety and security in our seniors. At first, they were very afraid of the police, but now they keep asking where they need to talk to them. So I want to say congratulations to community policing for the seniors at 252 Sackville Street.
I'm gonna stop and line after that gentleman there in the back there. So, oh, you sir in the blue shirt? You, the handsome guy. You still know better, right?
Hi, my name is Robin and I live at 365 Dundas Street East. So maybe this is a question for after, but I just kind of want to figure out how this is gonna work.
Sorry, where do you live, sir?
365 Dundas Street East, so right at the heart of it. So basically, I just have a question of how it works when we do call something in? Because I mean, I have lived here for four years. I love the community, I think it's great. However, I think we can all agree that this year has been pretty brutal so far. This year I've been chased twice, I've been harassed, and I've never had that happen before. I've called every single one of them in and done all the steps, but nothing was ever really followed up with it. I've seen the same woman who harassed me harass my girlfriend, I've seen her rob someone. I called all of them in. So in the interim, what is something that we can do as, as the community, if we're feeling threatened? To just keep calling those numbers or to get someone's phone number and text them? Like, I don't know what that is.
We actually have some of the neighborhood officers that work in here. Can I, can we take that after? Yeah, and one of them is handing you his card right now.
Hello, my name is Carol. And I think it's nice that you can kind of hand the mic when people are sitting down, because you get nervous standing out in front of everybody. But I just want to say, I'm standing here and I was born, on Ontario Street, came here when I was six. I'm in my late 60s and I can tell you that when I was a teenager, this, everything you're doing now is old school. It's all coming back. Because the community policing and the police officers, you could always approach, they'd always answer you, and they knew you by name, you knew all the police officers. So that's back in, I'm gonna say, six, in the 90s. But I may have gone further. I have eight sisters, count me makes nine girls, and the 51 Division has always been at our beck and call. Because who are you gonna call if you gotta phone the police when you need help? And we've had a lot of incidents. And I can say I've been a little desensitized by gunshots because I've heard so many. And I've seen so many youth pass away, which really breaks my heart. A lot of them have been on their walls outside, you can see the pictures. But I have great respect for our police officers because if it wasn't for them and everyone in this room, we have a wealth of knowledge and support and we have to help each other. We have to get back to that nice little close circle of communication. That's key, communication with the officers and the children and the teens and the adults. I'm sorry for going on, but I've held this in for a lot of years. And my dad would kick me in the ass if I didn't say how well we respect the uniform. It's huge in my family. They've saved a lot of my sisters from a lot of problems. With nine girls, you gotta go crazy and, you know, you know what happens with that. But I just want to say, grab Otiya and good luck in all your endeavors because we all need the police force.
Hi there, my name is Christopher Chaisson. Get ready, because I got a real hard call for you. You know, you kind of speak about how Toronto's researching how to do the community policing model. What makes Toronto so unique relative to other cities that have already explored this program? You know, why is it the type that we need to research ourselves to see how it fits to Toronto model? What's different from Toronto versus New York or another city that has implemented this? And kind of what are the learning from cities that you don't agree with the program that you hope to enact and fix in Toronto?
Okay, excellent question. I went to New York City and I went to Glasgow. Toronto is the most diverse city in the world. The most diverse, more than so than New York. New York did it because of the high homicide rate and the frisk, that kind of policy. They were forced into it. Were we forced into it? I don't think so, but we will if we don't get it right. We will be forced into that, to mandate a maybe for the officer. So we're getting ahead of that curve. And New York City, and I have to say this, they prescribe the programs to their communities. They had never had, they never consulted the public how they want it, what shape it forms, and no independent academic studies, no. Glasgow, completely different. I stood at Glasgow City Center, I was the only non-white person. I was scared. That's the experience, folks. I was scared when I spent Friday night at Glasgow. Okay, the community, neighborhood policing. First of all, I always, I'm very grateful, I'm very honest. They have, I asked, "Do you have any Muslim officer?" You know how they answer me? We have one of those. We have one of those. And they said, they asked me actually, "Are you really a police officer in Canada?", a deputy chief of the booth. I was scared. So it's a very homogeneous community. And I walked into Glasgow, some of the poor dinner city, there are new Somali, Afghanistan, they were afraid of the police. The police were dead enders, we don't want to get there. And that's not the version neighborhood officer, I wanted, in Toronto. New York, they prescribed. So now I'd like to thank Toronto with a balanced approach. Are we, are we there yet? I can say to you, we're not. The Humber College, I said to you, the research is over in December. I'm gonna ask them to continue the research for five years because this can only grow. We're never gonna get it perfect until we get the communities, they get academic, get independent review to make sure that we get it right. So I hope I answered your question. Glasgow is not a place, I hope I don't offend anyone here from Glasgow. I would love to go there, they drink a lot of beer, but I won't go back there anytime soon because... I was, I was actually, no, they were drinking beer. I was actually worried for my own safety because it was that difficult. And I can understand. And I actually walked into a convenience store. It was a male black person. I said, "Hey, how you doing?" He goes, "Well, it's good to see a fellow person." I said, "Pardon?" He made me feel comfortable. I said, "How's, how's, how's life in Glasgow?" He said, "Oh." And I went into Uber and it was a Somali driver. And I asked, "How's it to be a Uber driver in Somalia? People don't get in my car." That's how the other side of the world. So Toronto, we're blessed with the tolerance, the acceptance and the diversity. So I think we have, we can build a much better program for the rest of the world. Give me a couple years, please. All right. Next is Zellwiers.
Yes, good evening, Deputy.
Good evening, sir.
Look, I want to thank you for helping me on Glasswick Tourist.
Don't let the people hear that.
No, I'm not gonna quote the people, but you know, what I heard from you tonight was very interesting and I want the sergeants, the staff sergeants and constables to know that, that I was able to pick myself when I'm gonna call you to deal with a situation for me. And so I was happy to hear that you're gonna post your numbers and I want you to post your numbers somewhere so that I don't have to call you because I called you at 2:00 in the morning to deal with this. Very dry, where I should have called a staff sergeant or a sergeant or even Superintendent Barrera, who I know in a different context. Yes, you do. But what I also want to say after showering all that praise on you for being so kind, wise, is we deal with the issue of implicit bias, we deal with the issue of racial profiling, we deal with all those issues. I mean, I'm a criminal defense lawyer and quite a high-profile lawyer in the region part, but I don't know most of the police officers here. I just happened to know Superintendent Barrera is here because I saw the program that you were gonna speak and I decided I was gonna come. So I wanted to know who the commander was of 51 Division and then I replied to you. Congratulations. But I would like to know the police officers in the community in the same way that I know you and I'm quite comfortable with you. So I would like to know those officers in the community. And I think when we, and the problem I have as a black man with dreadlocks is if the police officer sees me at 10 or 11 o'clock and they don't recognize me from either television or from my work, cross-examine them in court, they adopt a posture as though this person is somebody who they don't need to speak to or they can interact with in a negative way. And I think that's the experience of a lot of young black people in the neighborhood. And I think in order for us to move forward with community policing, because the police are the people and the people are the police, we all have to reach a happy medium where you don't make assumptions. And I try not to make assumptions about police officers that are negative. I try to look on the positive side of policing because of course we need the police and the police need all cooperation in order to succeed. So I'm happy that you called this meeting and I'm happy that I was able to take some time out to come.
Okay, thank you. Let me respond to, thank you for reminding me. Remember I sent the officers' cell phone numbers, but Region Park or 51th Division, you may not run into them. Starting September, the 51 Division website will list the neighbor officer sergeants' name, email address, cell phone number. And every neighbor officer is assigned to particular neighborhoods their phone numbers, the email address should be accessible to all the division. You may not run into them. So I would ask you to go into the website and say, "Hi, my name is John. I'll introduce myself to you. Come by Boss Park or come by South Region and come for coffee." I need, you need to take some responsibility. So I mean, because I know they can meet everybody and say, "Here's my cell phone, here's my email." So go on the website and get that. Someone, so now you have, you know, all the neighborhood officers' cell phone numbers and email addresses in 51 Division. Yes, you know, human nature, racism. I joined the job 30 years ago, there was racism. 30 years later, there's still racism. But the officers are a lot different because they're gonna get extensive training. Are they gonna be saints? I'm not, I'm not here to say to you that they're saints. No, we're all humans, we're meaningless. But they're gonna, they get enough training and implicit bias and anti-racism. Okay, so they get that training, they're gonna be, asked to be sensitive, sensitive communications. That's why Superintendent Barrera picks his officers to represent him in the neighborhoods. The officer, he or she will be sensitive, especially to the needs, to be aware of implicit biases, to be aware of racism, that do exist. We can, we can only improve, okay, Zellwiers? But we are getting that extra training for our officers so, because we know it's that important.
So accountability is just a word for propaganda purposes if there isn't consequences. And one of the issues, I live at Dan Harrison, Sherburne and Dundas, nice wonderful place. There have been tenants that have died there who had come from supervised housing or shelters, Seaton House specifically. And that information had been shared with TPS if their unit had been taken over. And even though they've known a month prior to it, at least one individual was killed while they were in Seaton House due to head trauma. And that individual who had his unit taken over despite TCHC, CSU, yeah, a lot of things took place. Now, part of what I've seen systemically there is that when TPS tries to interact with TCHC, there's obstacles put in the way, they won't cooperate, you talk about privacy, guest issues. So if you have accountability pieces on your part, how do you call other divisions or other elements within the game to be accountable and to have consequences for their actions? Because, I mean, a perfect example, there are ways, I mean, it's interesting you would say that because you're willing to take $100,000 from Section 37 to build a gate in front of street health, but you're not willing to sign a paper that will allow the police to trespass people when they're hanging out there after hours. That's $100,000 towards a detox or something else other than making sure that these people that are being preyed upon there get more coffee, services, sex trade, more needles to buy the food and more snacks to keep going. That's the expectation.
Let us first address the issues there about our relationship with TCHC. So I can tell you that we absolutely have had challenges, there's no doubt about it. There has been. But recently, there's been a change over our TCHC and a commitment to really work with us and we're working with our partners. We are a little bit...
Actually, very timely. I met with the new chief constable from TCHC last Friday.
Go ahead, so that's...
Yes. And there's some commitment about the flow of information, namely our MOUs because it's been outdated, convoluted and the exchange of information has been less installed, let me just say that. And we both agree, hey, we can only improve. And he's also committed to neighborhood officer program for the TCHC in some areas. We're still gonna work out where, but I can guarantee you, this area, I spoke about, that I want the TCHC officer to work alongside, same hours, same type of mandate with our neighborhood officers in 51 Division. So that was discussed. And so the other agency trust and ask those things, I'm gonna leave it to Superintendent O'Per to address these issues.
Okay, one last thing and I'll... If you could do one thing for this community, now, you probably could ask for it, but you have the ability to directly...
Maybe not.
Maybe not. But on check day, check day is a shark fest in out here in which every addict in the city comes to Sherburne and Dundas, eyes are dope, partakes in Margaret's services, partakes in street health, and then what happens is when they leave their nine-to-five jobs, the party carries on. And usually it winds up in stabbings, shootings, rapings, and it's just, it's not good. And then on top of it, whatever teenagers that happen to get caught up into it and then wind up getting taken into 251, and then after a week they get dumped out at Allen Gardens. And that, that's not something that has not happened, that is something that happens with a frequency that is disgusting, the fact that it is allowed to continue. So thank you.
Well, first, I thank you because I do have to run out to a small little event. My day doesn't end till 1:00 PM, so thank you for coming. You know what? I can only do what I said to you, Deputy. I hope you understand, we're only part of the solution, we're not the entire solution. So I'm not trying to allocate responsibilities. Nobody asks us if any location should be put in Dundas or Sherburne. Nobody asks the Toronto Police Service that. I hope you understand that. So, but I am committed on your behalf, but you also, you also speak to the right agencies. So because I am trying to do talking to them. But at the end of the day, you know, this gentleman in the blue put it very eloquently, "They're not accountable to Toronto Police Service." I can only make the ask, "We'll do everything we can for Toronto Police Service, Deputy." But you need to understand, they say, "Both are facetious approaches, it's not only a Toronto Police Service issue." So we will do what we can. So I am committed to bring more neighborhood officers to 51 Division and hopefully improve the quality of life. You know, every, but every, I said, I'll say this to you, every agency is important. You know, I, I said to you, I hope to, I have 140 next year. But I also understand the healthcare issues, their mental health issue, their senior issues, their educational issue. So we're only one of the agencies vying for that, that ultimate, that same power money. So we have to be diligent and we will, we will expend strategically. And I do understand, I just talked to Superintendent, I don't understand the needs in downtown versus in Scarborough or in Poplar, absolutely different needs. And I am getting a clearer picture, what, what I need, where I need to prioritize the new resources if I'm gonna expand in the options, where I'm gonna put them. I'll leave it for your implementation because 40 Division was a safe dialogue. I guarantee when I go to 50 Division... I guarantee when I go to 52 next week, it'll be same dialogue. I've been at 55, same dialogue, 51, same dialogue. So I know where I'm gonna put my investment once I get additional resources. Okay, folks? Well, thank you for coming out. I know it's a beautiful summer night and to listen to me, to speak to you with you for two hours. So thank you very much.